As soon as we move forward to find a solution for housing in Dunsmere.
Thank you, Eden.
Thank you, Ms. Dahlstrom. I think we should go to Mr. David Thieno next, if you wouldn't mind unmuting Mr. Thieno.
Hi there. How do you do? I'm Dave Thieno, and I'd like to thank all the members of the committee and everybody for putting this ad hoc committee together. I think this is a really great idea. So I was also at the Planning Commission along with Eden some time back. And my background, I've been a homeowner in Dunsmere for about 20 years. I've got a place on River Avenue across the canyon from downtown and another on Second Street. I've been a career educator here in Siskiyou County for over 20 years, and I've raised both of my kids here in Dunsmere, so I have a vested kind of stake in the community. My interest in the Airbnb issue really originally came from a lot of my colleagues in the teaching community trying to find housing and just knowing that there's a lot of struggles in finding affordable housing in the area. And it was all exacerbated largely by an Airbnb opening next door to my house on River Avenue last summer. And my wife and kids and I have been, what I would say, maybe on the receiving end of some of the externalities and irritants and nuisances that associate with some of the Airbnb, especially in my case where the owner is actually not on campus and it's being managed by somebody out of town. So that's much on my mind, sort of the, you know, how the regulations can work around this idea of the accountability of tenants or guests, as we might say, when there are some things going on that maybe threaten the safety and the stability of the social fabric, as well as the, just things like fire safety and noise and smells and all those kinds of things. So anyway, that's me. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to read my letter of application, and I look forward to having the opportunity to work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shall we go on to Ms. Jeannie Baker, if you wouldn't mind unmuting Ms. Baker?
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Hopefully, it'll be a better New Year for all of us. All right, well, let's see. A lot of you know me. I've been a homeowner here in Dunsmere for quite a few years. I'm also a landlord for long-term properties and short-term properties, not in Siskiyou County, but in other places. I do understand both sides of the coin. I have friends in Dunsmere that both own homes and rent homes, and I work in the tour industry. So I'd like to bring not only a homeowner's viewpoint, a landlord's viewpoint, but also an industry viewpoint, and I think I can make a pretty positive contribution to this committee. I served on a committee before, and yeah, I'd like to help us out in this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, I think we need to go to Mr. Louis Dewey, if you wouldn't mind unmuting Mr. Dewey.
Think you need to, you're top-heavy on administrators and bottom-heavy on input. All, these are all excellent people. I am quite honored to be actually applying with them all. And I want to hear all the things they have to say. But what I want to say for myself is that, in many ways, when you need, you know, certain knowledge, which is the experience of being a vacation rental owner and a long-term renter, you know, for that matter, but I go back all vacation rental owner, or an Airbnb host, and then run it from somewhere else. So my qualifications are that I was born here. I've been here just a couple of months now, right? And I'm an old guy, which is why I'm so slow. You gotta, you gotta cut me a little slack there. And I actually have been able to serve on committees, and we actually got something done. And I, it's, it's like you say, it's really about, you know, how can we cooperate together to get to the end of it? Right now, it, it looks like this is a really loaded committee, however, however, in whichever way it ends up being. I'm very pleased about that. And at, at the least, the least importance is the other kinds of qualifications that I have, because they keep me plenty busy, but I'm on a number of other committees. And I want to serve on this one so that I could be helpful, not because I have a bunch of opinions and I'm totally swayed one way or another. I'm, I'm really trying to get, one of my big concerns is, for example, that it doesn't get overregulated. The vacation rental business has its own regulation, and it happens all the time. I've seen it just dozens of times. Places aren't successful, and the owners get unhappy with them, and they stop doing it. And if they are successful, then there's probably a reason why. One of the big things is, of course, in Dunsmere, you gotta have enough parking, and that has been why several vacation rooms have bugged. Anyway, that is why I'm on this committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. I believe that's all we have for applicants that are in this Zoom meeting now.
All right. And then Lori Barnes Harley, all council members received a letter, her letter as well, and I hope everyone had a chance to review that. All right. Thank you, all the applicants for being with us tonight that were here. We really appreciate you guys' in-person presence and the commitment, and it seems like all of you have a lot to offer for this committee. So I guess I'd like to open it up for discussion with the council. Councilman Kaiser.
Well, what about, I'm looking, I don't have a letter from Lori Barnes.
I can read it on her behalf, if you like, Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, could you?
Yeah, let me just read. So Lori states, "I operate an Airbnb in the city, and I feel I would be a good, have good input for a committee. I work well with others. Please indicate why you feel qualified to serve." She states, "I operate an Airbnb, and I feel I have a good sense of fairness and am willing to listen and work with all sides of the issue." Yeah, that's pretty much her entire application.
Okay, thank you. Well, for one, I, I definitely would like to work with Louis Dewey. The man's knowledge, like he said, he's been here since the very first one. And I think this committee would be honored to have him on it with his knowledge. Am I assuming that Catherine Wallace pulled out?
She did, yes.
I don't know. Let, let me hear what you guys got to say. Come back to me.
Councilwoman Lukeye.
Um, Councilmember Art had his hand up first. I'll let him go, and then I can go.
Well, my observation is, this is an extremely well-qualified roster of candidates wanting to serve their community on a very important issue. I don't know who made the decision that two citizen members would be adequate for this committee, given their mandate, which is a very short-term review of the draft rental regulations. I wonder, first of all, if there's any interest in expanding the citizen component to at least three. If not, then I think we're looking for a balance of perspectives to help inform the members of the Planning Commission and the City Council. But I'm very, very pleased with those that are interested in serving, and my particular interest is hoping that Dave Thieno is selected to the committee based on his comments when this first came up, as both someone that understands the need for housing, short-term Airbnb, midterm rental housing. The city's housing stock is exceedingly constrained, and also, I agree that we are not trucky where my brother lives, but we have to make sure that the behaviors of short-term guests are acceptable to neighbors in the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any more conversation?
Sure, yeah. So I appreciate Louis Dewey. I love that he's super involved. I, you know, listening to the people who are here today, I really like getting Dave and Eden involved. I haven't, you know, had the opportunity to converse with them and hear their viewpoints and see them get involved as much as other people have in the past, so I would lean towards Dave and Eden. Personally, I also am a data junkie, so I really appreciate their objective perspective. I'm looking at the data that's happening around and having their experiences as short-term rental owners. You know, I would support the two of them. If Louis Dewey is also recommended, I would be okay with that as well, but I think definitely from my perspective, spreading the love and getting, you know, some newer people that I haven't seen super involved with city functions is, is a little bit of a priority for me as well. The other nice thing, just to kind of reiterate with this committee, it is an open committee, I believe. So I believe they will have some open meetings. So, you know, Jeannie and Louis Dewey are, of course, invited and, and, you know, encouraged to attend those meetings and give their viewpoint, and I think that viewpoint would still be considered, especially if we did appoint Dave and Eden. It seems like they're going to be pretty objective and take what they hear from people and those concerns very strongly. So I would, you know, I would make a motion to appoint Dave Thieno and Eden Dahlstrom to the short-term rental ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lukeye. Councilman Deutsch, do you have any comments before the motions?
Yes. I got my hand up. Can I say something?
Yes, Councilman Kaiser.
Okay, I would have to concur with Ms. Juliana's assessment. I believe that we could open this up for three, and Dave Eden would be great, as well as Louis Dewey. I mean, that would, I would have to second her motion and ask that we add that third seat.
Well, excuse me, Councilman Kaiser. I believe you misunderstood, Councilwoman Lukeye. If I'm not mistaken, she was pointing out that it's open meetings, so you could attend as a member of the public, but not a committee member.
Correct.
But I'm also saying that why can't we put three on three?
Okay, that's an interesting thought, and we could certainly discuss that. But I'd like to hear from our fifth council member. Councilmember Deutsch, do you have any thoughts on the applicant?
Am I muted? Can you hear me?
No, you're good.
Okay, good. Thank you. I thought I was here for a second. I think that we have some really qualified people. I agree. But I also think that I was really impressed with two new voices that came up. And I know that, for instance, Louis, you're a valuable, valuable, ultra-valuable member, but I think that your contribution with all your workload could best be done as during open meetings. So I want to second the motion that Councilwoman Julie Lukeye just made to have David Theo and Eden as the two members.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there?
I would also say, if we went to a third, I would, I would probably go with Lori, but if we're going to go with two, I would just, I would go with those two.
Well, as we could open that up for discussion, I personally am not in favor of expanding committees. It's very wonderful to have so many qualified applicants involved with this committee. But what I would say is that there's a lot of issues that are important to Dunsmere, a lot of need for public involvement, and there will be another committee, just like this one, that comes up, and please, you know, apply and be interested. But, you know, the larger you make the committee, the difficult, more difficult it is to schedule accordingly. And, you know, we do have a lot of balanced input, I believe, with the current numbers of seven. But.
So, Mr. Mayor, what's your view?
I'm happy with all the candidates that have applied. Councilman Art, your hand is up again.
Well, I did want to tag off of what Juliana said a little bit in this way. I am personal friends with Kathy Wallace. Kathy Wallace called me this morning, and she said, "Peter, the reason that I withdrew my application is because I had an issue in my neighborhood, sort of along the lines of Dave Thieno, and that issue was resolved, so I really don't need to be on the committee, as long as I can talk to the citizen members that the council does select." And I said, "Thank you very much. And by the way, would you be interested in serving on the Economic Development Committee or the Historical District Committee?" And she said, "Yes, I have a 30-year background in banking, and I would love to." So, thank you.
Excellent. All right, there's a motion to appoint Eden, Eden Strong, and, or Dahlstrom, and Dave Thieno. And a second, under a roll call vote. Councilwoman Lukeye.
Aye.
Councilman Art.
Aye.
Councilman Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilman Deutsch.
Aye.
Myself is also an aye, although I would encourage Louis Dewey and Jeannie Baker to attend the meetings that are open to the public and share their thoughts on it.
Congratulations and welcome to the community.
Yes, and as far as meeting times go, I know we'll coordinate with our city planner, but don't anticipate the first meeting being till in the month of February.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm assuming this is a Brown Act committee, but we should make that clear.
It is technically listed as a ad hoc committee, but my, from the previous reports by the contract planner Rico, that the meetings will be open. Is that correct, Rico or Todd?
Yes, they'll, they'll be open there.
They'll be open, but they won't have the same notice requirements as a Brown Act committee.
Yeah, ad hoc has nothing to do with it. Either you're going to comply with the notice publication and related requirements, or you're not.
We will put notices on the city website. If the council would like us to go through the full notification process, we can. However, the anticipation was that we would simply, if we have members of the public that are interested, such as Louis Dewey or Jeannie Baker, that we could certainly make these, at the very least, you know, so no, to begin with, the intent I did not think was, I apologize. Councilmember Lukeye, I had, I did not know that we were doing open meetings, but that's perfectly fine, and we can adapt to that very easily. I had sort of assumed that if we had other people that were interested in participating, we could certainly make that an option. But if the, if the council liked these be open meetings, absolutely, that's, that would be fine. I would simply suggest that we publish the meeting, you know, the agenda for it, you know, your, your normal three days prior, and place that information on the website. I don't know that I go through the trouble of posting around town. Anyone that's following this issue, if we're not subject to the Brown Act, should be engaged already.
Well, also, there'll be plenty of opportunity for public comment, as there was at the Planning Commission meeting that I attended as a citizen, when it comes back to council for consideration as well.
Correct.
Yeah, I believe there has to be at least one reading at the Planning Commission, which would be an open meeting, and there has to be at least two readings at the City Council level, which are all Brown Act and open and noticed.
Okay, so it sounds like, at least based on Councilor Planner Tinsman's recommendation, on the ability to just meet and proceed with the committee's work might be more efficient, and then it'll be publicly noticed at all the subsequent meetings for adoption.
Correct.
All right. Thank you, everyone who applied, and thank you so much, Eden and Dave, for serving on this committee. It's going to be a lot of work, but hopefully, we can get our town straightened out and prepared for the future, future years of people coming and joining our city and community members, hopefully having more options when it comes to housing.
Mr. Art has his hand up.
Mr. Art?
No, I, I'm sorry, lowering hand.
Thank you.
So now let's move into general public comment. This is the time for members of the public to address an issue that is not on the agenda or on the consent agenda. On each pick will be given three minutes. Please state your address, your full name and address prior to your public comment. So everything that's on the agenda is going to be noticed later for public comment. But if you have any issues with the consent agenda, it's check register for 1212 to 1231, 2020, and then item B, rescind resolution 202017, issue new resolution 202101, Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Round 1 authorizes the access to funding package. This is the CDBG, Community Block Grant Loan, that the City of Dunsmere is the lead agency on. So if anyone has a public comment, please raise your hand in the participants tab or hit star nine on your phone.
We do have, oh, sorry, go ahead, Wendy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed. Ms. Baker has a comment?
Yes.
Yes, I would like us to take a leaf from Mount Shasta and use some of that community block grant money to make a fund for free snow removal for our seniors. Mount Shasta does this in coordination with Great Northern, and I think that's something that would be worth looking into. The second thing that I would like to see is garbage cans at all of the bus stops. I don't know if you've noticed, but garbage piles up at the bus stops. I think these are two things that could benefit our city and that they should be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Baker. Is there any further public comment? Again, if you want to make a public comment, even just a small one, go to the participants tab and raise your hand. Under the raise your hand.
We do have one person on the phone. If you are on the phone and would like to make a comment, it's star nine. I don't see anybody else.
All right, see no further comments. I'm going to now close our general public comment. We'll move forward into our next item, item five, which I believe is staff and member comments. Since I saw that Lieutenant Wetstein joined us a few minutes ago, perhaps he can begin.
Good evening, Arony. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, sorry for showing up a little late. I just realized I was about a half an hour late. I have really nothing to report. I just wanted to update the council on our intention to replace the, or to appoint a new Dunsmere sergeant. We are doing sergeant testing next week, and we're hoping to make an appointment by the end of this month. So I will be communicating with City Manager Yu Haas about who that's going to be and when the official appointment will be, but I will keep council updated. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate that, and hope your, your new responsibilities are going well in the Sheriff's Department.
So far, so good.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Lieutenant Wetstein? All right, so none. Thank you so much, Lieutenant Wetstein. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to City Manager Yu Haas.
So, just a couple notes. The, our Fire Chief is in quarantine again. His wife has tested positive, so he's going to be out. But we, just to assure members of the community, we, we have access to our full volunteer fire department, and, you know, we still have full coverage. I would like to also let folks know that the Business View Magazine piece has netted the first prospecting call, and that something that actually has never been here called and is retiring, has a successful business down in Davis and a plane, and he inquired about purchasing property up at the airport to build his own hangar. And at that moment, at this moment, it's a nonstarter, just because it's bedrock and we'd need to blast and be cost prohibitive. But he has secured a hangar, and he wants to set down roots and invest in the community. So just a couple, couple issues.
All right, could you also share with us that, in the update on the CDBG, because it's on the consent agenda, but will we have news on that in the future?
Yeah, it's, it, right now, everything has been in for at least a month and a half, and so it is just waiting for the approval. Everything, all i's are dotted and t's are crossed. We're just waiting for the state to move, and we expect something imminently. And just to remind folks, the plain-old Community Development Block Grant ask was for $500,000, and, you know, in, we're going to receive that full amount. We just need to get that, you know, get that approved. It's close. It's, to remind folks, it's moving away from traditional Community Development Block Grant loans and more towards micro enterprise, as well as grants for things like storefront improvements. And, yeah, so it's a, it's a little bit different focus, and some of the requirements under the micro enterprise program are less onerous than they would be under the traditional economic, economic development block grant program for CDBG loans.
Thank you, City Manager.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Question for City Manager?
Yes.
Todd, there's a couple things I got. I was wondering if, three questions. Have you heard anything on the Mossbury Falls? What is the State Fly Bridge project?
Okay.
And I've been asking to get, I got permission from them, but I've, I need a city manager that can coordinate a field trip. The City Council should go up and looks at Box, I want to see the dam. I think it's, we sleep good at night knowing that's there, but I think that we should be able to see it. They've offered it to us. I was wondering if you could make that happen.
So I, you kind of broke up on the last piece, so I didn't hear what the third piece was?
Yeah, Mr. Kaiser, do you want to repeat the last sentence?
I was wondering if you could get us into tour Box Canyon Dam.
I can take a look into it, sure.
They've already said we could come. We just need to coordinate with the City Manager and all the members of council to where we could make it happen. We were gonna, we were gonna go back when, but Mari Shanta couldn't make the trip because she couldn't walk that far.
Okay.
So it, it never got into fruition.
Well, and Councilman Kaiser, since that time, I've actually met and know the caretaker of the dam. They're not currently doing tours, but, you know, pending normalization after COVID, he'd be more than happy to accommodate us.
Yeah, because he said he'd give council a tour.
Okay, so let me answer your first two questions. First, on Mossbury.
Yeah.
The, the, you know, kind of the big issue right in the moment is getting approval for the, the preliminary engineering drawings and structural drawings that we've finally been able to submit to UP Structural Engineering for review. That hasn't come back yet. Once we get the approval on that, the next step is to continue to continue to refine those engineering drawings while simultaneously working on getting a lease in place that is sustainable for the city. We've been told that UP is typically they, at one point, they were offering a dollar per year lease in mutually beneficial situations like we have. And they've moved away from that model from their real estate group towards a minimum $500. I believe it's a month and that's obviously a nonstarter, but there has been robust letter writing campaign with a couple of citizens that I've been in my pressure on Lamalfa's office and directly to the president of UP in DC. And he's put pressure on the folks in Sacramento to make this happen, but we need to know that we have a viable plan in place first. So that's that's that piece.
Thank you.
The butterfly bridge project is is, you know, environmental is done. We have a series of timelines, the the bottom line and I I I put that timeline in our weekly report. The last time it's like we go in there, but the the bottom line is we're looking for a completion in 2022.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have our finance director on today?
Michael saying, can we unmute Mr. Michelson, please?
I just unmuted myself.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. No report here. Guys are doing great.
Thanks, Blake.
All right, let's move forward to council comments. Councilman Lucasey? Would you like to start?
Yeah, I just have a couple of updates. So I just let city manager U Haas know pretty much about an hour ago. We submitted the children's park application for our per capita Prop 68 funding. The our regional coordinator has reviewed the application and everything looks good. I just have to reformat a couple of the documents. And then she's going to be sending it on to the state level. So that's basically a first round approval. We're doing really good on that. So that was, that's good news. That's moving forward. I do have to apologize for our upcoming account committee item that I've been trying to help city manager U Haas with. Just a winter PSA, I totaled my truck on the highway, like I think the Friday before Christmas on some black ice. So please drive carefully if you're getting on the northbound I five entry. Up by Hedge Creek, it there were five vehicles that spun out on black ice that day, so I was in good company, I guess. So my brain got a little rattled and I kind of forgot I was going to get some stuff for Todd, but we can go over that today. And if I'll probably recommend to push that to the next meeting so I can put some stuff together. Other than that, I was contacted by the Amtrak Society. It's a nonprofit and they want to reach out and work with the city on improving Amtrak relations. They are not part of the Amtrak organization, but they're a nonprofit that kind of goes between goes between communities and Amtrak to improve Amtrak stops and scheduling. And they advocate for Amtrak services, so I'll be forwarding that on to Mayor Brian and city manager U Haas. And then the other thing is I'm just the Prop 68 competitive grants, which is a different program from our per capita has been extended to March. One of the things is I did do a preliminary call with the state and we might be able to if we get an application together quickly, we might be able to apply for that competitive grant and actually be competitive to get those dollars. And just to put that in perspective, the competitive Prop 68 grants are a minimum $1.5 million and up to, I believe, eight million is the highest that they'll give you, but City of Dunsmere qualifies for the no match for that program. And I did review the Mossbury Falls project, which would include planning, engineering, sequoia and construction for parking amenities, the trail itself, and that could be ineligible project. And then the other eligible project could be the Dunsmere Pool. So I'm working with the state to make sure that whichever project that we put forward is going to be competitive and worth the time and effort to put that information together. Before we pull the trigger, one of the difficulties with that Prop 68 competitive grant is it's a monster of an application. So if we do go forward with this, it's going to be a huge endeavor, but it has a big payout if we're able to get that grant. So I've just been kind of working on those things. I think I think that's everything. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues. Only two items. One is a request that the mayor work with the city manager on the issue of having all of us pay closer attention to the protocols that were drafted by former mayor Spurlock. And former member Craig, all five of us adopted them. The part that is of great importance to me is how items get on the agenda. The notion of pre-agenda review and an assurance that an item is really ready for consideration. And all of us have our priorities, but there has to be a fair balancing of priorities which the protocols were designed to address. So maybe all of you feel up to speed and feel like we're in compliance, but I don't believe we are. And I think maybe it's time to take a look at them and readopt them maybe at our next meeting. The the other item is I do think the isolation caused by COVID doesn't advantage the type of citizen government we have in Dunsmere. And I hope we can start moving back to face to face meetings. Maybe the venue is wrong across the street from city hall. Maybe it needs to be the community center. But in this year of recovery, 2021, I think it just works better for a community where a lot of people don't have computer connectivity to try to reach out and include them in our governance of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Councilman. Deutsch.
Okay, hello. Yeah, thank you. The one thing I wanted to give an update on was we had a meeting last night of the or actually Tuesday night of the Chamber of Commerce and it's kind of in flux right now. The the good news was is that they have a potential for a new president with an incredible energy. And that person is Mark Ralby. He's just taking a little bit of time next couple of weeks to make sure he's ready, but it looks like he will be ready to take over there. And what what the excitement about this is, is that I think that between he and Todd, city manager, that there really is a sense of excitement about the possibility of really doing some good things in terms of economic development. And so from that standpoint, I expect that we'll be hearing in a couple of weeks that we will have a new leader there and I'm thinking that's going to be really exciting. And also the idea that Todd was part of the conversation there. So it really kind of did a good job of melding his viewpoint in with what they're talking about as they kind of face the new future. With that in mind, the other thing I'd like to point out, I've go into the city office every once in a while, city hall. And I realize that so much good work is going on from the people there and just went in yesterday and had a chance to talk with Manya Brian and I was just really impressed with, on one hand, the way that she has kind of taken on the airport and the relationship with the the pilots out there and informed a sense of community. I really appreciate that. And so that's all I have right now. I think overall, we should make an effort to call out the the good things that are happening by our staff and give them credit because they've been doing a hell of a good job through all this craziness and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deutsch. Councilman Kaiser.
Yes, thank you. I first of all, I want to say that word is to the great bind that Ron's doing great, Ron McLeod from the hardware store, and they might be opening like a soft open next week. So it will, it'll be nice to have the staple of our community back open. Man, I had a list of stuff. But I I gotta tell you, you guys, we're talking about maybe using the community center. I gotta concur with Mr. Art. You know, I can't wait to get back to face to face. The there's a lot of people that have been hitting me up about, man, I don't do computer. When are we going to have a city council meeting? I guess they're doing it in weed. But there's a way that we could probably figure something out. We 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 seem to do a lot better when we're face to face and we can include the people when them coming to be part of the meeting to them, that's 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 a big thing. I want to thank the people that applied for the earlier committee thing. Just being involved is is a big thing when you step up and you volunteer. And and to me, volunteering is a big thing. And getting people to volunteer is a big thing. So it's nice when we have, when we have five, six, seven people, I I want to thank them all. I think that was pretty cool. I want to give a special thanks to a city employee and a city manager. Brian Wilson, I guess he took the tree down. He helped me put the Christmas tree up for the town. And a big shout out to Cut Above. Once again, they brought down a nice, beautiful tree for us. This is our first meeting of 2021. And I wish everybody a happy new year. And be taken down the Christmas decorations Saturday morning. If anybody wants to come out and help, hopefully the weather's right. But I just want to tell everybody that Happy New Year. Look forward to getting back to face to face and well, there you go. I just, I I appreciate everybody's on this council. And I appreciate the people in the town that step up and want to be a part of. You know, it's pretty cool. It really is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Kaiser. And for myself, I'd just like to encourage everyone to do their best to help our community, even if it socially distanced through these tough times. I'm very hopeful that with the new stimulus that's passed and the CDBG loan that should be approved soon. We will have relief for our small businesses soon, but we understand that it's a it's a dark winter out there for you. And do your best when you can, if you can, to support small businesses that are trying to stay afloat. I'd also like to thank Councilman Kaiser personally for seeing to it that Santa was able to arrive for the tree lighting and a very, very socially distant couple round of carols. It was not what we usually do, but it was appreciated more than it usually was, I'd say, by the few attendees. Thank you, Big Dave.
Thank you.
All right. We should move forward to committee reports.
I'm kind of looking forward to
Pagan, Big Dave?
I'm kind of looking forward to having one.
Yeah, committee reports. Are there any committees that met during this time? All right, seeing none. Let's move forward to approval of the meeting minutes for the December 17th meeting. Are there any questions?
Motion to approve?
All right, motion.
I'll second.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, see motion Kaiser second. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Seen none. Moving to roll call vote, Councilman, Councilwoman Lucasey?
Hi.
Councilman Art?
Hi.
Councilman Kaiser?
Hi.
Councilman Deutsch?
Did he get muted?
Councilman Deutsch?
Let me find him. I think he got muted. Yep, he did.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I I is my vote. Yes.
Okay, and myself is also an I. The minutes are adopted. All right, let's move forward to the consent agenda. I have it wrong here.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Yeah, that's I only I only have item A up on the screen, but I also need item B, which is to rescind resolution 202017 issue new resolution 2021 01. Community development block grant coronavirus round one authorizes access to the full funding package. Six hundred thirty two thousand seven hundred and eighty three dollars for the Siskiyou County Micro Enterprise Assistance Program, City of Dunsmere's lead. Is there any?
Mr. Mayor, is there any way, Wendy, is there any way you can get those words to post in this meeting right now?
Let me see and if Juliana, if you can help.
Cannot post, we have to remove them from the consent agenda before we can approve it.
It's posted publicly, Dave.
I put it on here. One second.
Here, I can just, I've got the pulled up. I'll just steal the screen real quick.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thanks, Juliana.
All right.
I feel better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any discussion of the consent agenda?
I move, we adopt the consent agenda.
Well, I already did that.
Well, I seconded then.
All right, Kaiser move, seconded by Deutsch. Councilman Art?
Hi.
Councilwoman Lucasey?
Hi.
Councilman Kaiser?
Hi.
Councilman Deutsch?
Hi.
Myself is also an I. We adopted the consent agenda.
So all you have to do, Matthews, just hit the share screen again and it'll steal it back for me. Or I'll just stop sharing. You can share again.
I got it.
Cool.
All right. So let's move forward into our public hearing for tonight. So we're a public hearing for the community development block grant coronavirus rounds two and three. Todd, would you like to assist with this item?
Sure. So the community development, well, basically there has been a new round of coronavirus related community development block grant funds that has been made available and we can apply for it. It's we can apply for a total of just under 220,000. And that just adds to the relief that we can get out to the community. Like the original round of CD one funds, this money can be used for economic development and yeah. Creating new businesses and and retaining the businesses we have in the form of grants and micro enterprise. And it just adds in additional 200 and just under 220,000. There also are a couple of things that CV funds can be used for and you know, we need to you know, look at it on a case by case basis, but these funds are able to be used for providing housing facilities for people that are experiencing homelessness, including acquisition of structures for rehab. It can be used to for public facility improvements connected to safety and I, you know, that definition, I'm not completely clear on. That's something that maybe we could get the roof of the of the library repaired. The also can be used for public services to respond to COVID-19 impacts and that can cover a lot of the the cost of the things that the city are doing as a direct result of COVID. But it also it will allow us to potentially extend money to the Dunsmere Resource Center because they are doing some very heavy lifting towards responding to the pandemic.
Okay, just a quick question to help. Okay, just a quick question to have, get some context for this. Is this something we have to do a whole separate application for, or is this built in just another round of funding from an application we've already submitted?
It's a new application for the two. It's, um, it's pretty basic. It follows the same format as CD1. And as you guys all recall, we have Siskiyou County Economic Development as our consultant on chasing these grants and administering these funds and helping us with the underwriting for micro enterprise loans. The thing with the micro enterprise, if you recall, we had this discussion before, but we've switched. You know, I've moved towards a micro enterprise approach and grants away from traditional. In that, the approval time and the requirements for both are less onerous than traditional loans.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions of city manager from council?
Nope. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll now open up a public hearing on this item. The Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Rounds Two and Three. It'll be the same process as before with public comment. Go to the participants tab and raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment at this public hearing. If you're on the phone, you can hit star nine and it'll have the same result as raising your hand.
I don't see anyone in the participant section.
Right. No one is there. We'll now, I will now close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item 10, old business. There has been a has been a request to move item A or item C up to before item A.
Yes, that was me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could, I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. If there's no objection.
Did we already move through a motion for the public hearing?
Oh, um, no, we've not. What sort of motion do we need? Just to close the?
Uh, let me see.
Or to direct staff to apply for it?
I believe we do have to, or is this only, I'm trying to unmute city manager Uhas to get some clarification.
Was your staff report?
One second.
Okay.
No, fine. Look. Okay, there we go. Is there an intended action?
So we want to, you know, again, we need to come back here to approve this at a second round because it's a public hearing. But want to, you know, I, the motion is really to say that we are in support of applying for the, the coronavirus round two and three. But again, we can't really fully execute this until we, we come back at the next council meeting.
Okay, so it's just a continuation to the next meeting. Okay, thank you.
Well, we could submit a motion of support if anyone would like to do that.
I'll make a motion that we support block grant coronavirus rounds two and three and bring it back for a second round of public hearing. Is that right?
Yep. Yes. Okay, I'll second.
All right, Kaiser made the motion. Lucasey's second. Councilman Art.
Hi.
Councilwoman Lucasey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilman Deutsch.
Hi.
Myself is also an I. All right, not to get ahead of myself. So then let us move forward into item 10, old business. And there has been a request to move item C before item A. In the interest of someone who's joining us and going to give us a small, a brief overview of the position. If there's no objections, see none, let's do that.
No.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
What I'd like to do is welcome to people that have joined us tonight and that, and I thank you for moving this up so that they can participate and then leave. I have both Mark Rowley, who is the person that I have nominated to take my position as the Dunsmere Representative on the Board of Directors of the Colliers Interpretive and Information Center. This is a joint powers authority that runs the center up just north of Wyrica on Interstate Five. And I have been on this board for about four years, serving as vice president. And with everything else that I've got on my plate right now, I realized that this was a position that could better be served by somebody with certain skills and that person, I believe, is Mark Rowley. And so with that in mind, I also invited Rennie Cleland, who's also on the, the line here. And he is the current president of the Collier Center. And I asked him to join just so we could give you all a sense of what the center is, if you're not familiar with it. And to let him listen in on our discussion of replacing me with Mr. Rowley. So if I could, could I ask Mr. Cleveland, Rennie, could you, uh, could we unmute him and make sure he has a chance to give a little talk there, please?
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilman Deutsch and Mayor Brian. I appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you a little bit of information about the Collier Interpretive and Information Center. I live in Doris in, uh, on Highway 97. I've been involved with the Collier Interpretive Center since its inception and it was in the early 1990s. I was sitting on the city council of the city of Doris and we had a couple of representatives from the Wyrica area and Etna, two fellows came over and talked about the fact that the Collier Rest Area at Interstate Five and Highway 96, right there at the Klamath River, Caltrans was in the process of, of considering to close down that center and create a commercial opportunity for gas stations and convenience stores and other things along I-5. And if you've been to that rest area, it is without, without a doubt, it is the most park-like and picturesque rest area in California, bar none. One of our representatives that initially came to the Doris City Council was a for supervisor for the Klamath National Forest, name is Bob Rice. Bob Rice has sat on the state board for the rest areas throughout California. And he knows the quality of the rest area that we have. So what's happened in 1990, in the early 1990s, we created, I did not, I was part of the initial group, but I, I can tell you right now, I didn't take a leadership role in this. But we, through Bob Rice and a young man who's dead now, who's gone now, is George Farragut out of Etna, created what's called a joint, a joint powers authority, a JPA, of which all of the communities in Siskiyou County partnered with, including Siskiyou County, as, as the county itself, but Dunsmere is definitely a huge partner in this. The intention of the Collier Interpretive Center through the JPA is not to be a, another chamber of commerce, although we do have a lot of items that benefit the chambers throughout the, the county. But this really represents each one of the communities and it gives community represent, representation to bring brochures, sit as a volunteer and inform the literally millions of people that come in there on an annual basis into the rest area and into the commu, into the visitor's center. When this first started out, there was no kiosk. There was a small kiosk that was not manned. We found some grant money to create a a center, essentially a, a separate building on state property. It's the only one in California that is literally owned by the, the Collier Interpretive and Information Center that sits on a piece of state property that is not. They have, they have some restrictions for us, but for the most part, we're, we run as an independent organization at that park or that roadside rest. The goal of Colliers is to keep those travelers and literally they're from all over the world with rental cars and motorhomes and you name it. But what, the intent is to educate those people, interpret what we have as natural resources and it's kind of a river theme. But the, the goal is to keep those travelers in Siskiyou County for a period of time. If they stop there to rest, we're going to try to send them to Yak's Restaurant in Dunsmere for lunch. If it's a, you know, if they're looking for a good restaurant or anywhere else along the line, that's the importance of making the community connections. So the bottom line, we have a nine-member board, really. It's from Tulley Lake to Dunsmere to Doris to Etna. We have representatives from each one of those. Bruce Deutsch, Councilman Deutsch, was one of our representatives from Dunsmere. He ended up becoming our vice president of the Collier Interpretive and Information Center. It is, it, like I said, it's run by a volunteer board. Right now COVID has shut us down. We, we meet once a month. It's the third Tuesday of the month. It rotates. We've had meetings down at the Railroad Park in Dunsmere. We've had meetings in Etna, the brewery over in Etna. Because we are a JPA, we try to represent each one of those communities. Since COVID, we've pretty much been doing the Zoom meeting, just like you guys are. But we need, we really need community participation. We, we need to show an asset to each one of the communities, whether it's Dunsmere or Doris. I see the value, even though it's a highway I-5 site, it still benefits me on the Butte Valley side in the northeastern Siskiyou County because I can, I can provide documents that represent the lava beds of Lower Klamath or the Klamath National Forest and I can get those over into the center. And if somebody comes in and they're looking for next year's vacation area, I can, I can influence them to go to eastern Siskiyou County, or if I have knowledge of the river, the upper Sacramento River, I can send them to Dunsmere and say, you know, it's, it's a great place to, to vacation or bring that motorhome up and park it at Lake Siskiyou. So that's basically what it is. I hope I didn't take much, too much time. Councilman Deutsch, if you want to add to it, Bruce has been on there for four years. We've been partners on a couple of other boards. I've been on there since the 1990s, so it's, it's an extended period of time for me. And for some reason, you end up becoming a lead, lead person. And I, I believe in Siskiyou County, but I believe all of us throughout the county, through this JPA, has an opportunity to represent our, our own personal communities. As, as a representative, I don't spend a lot of volunteer time over there. It takes me about an hour and a half to drive up to Collier. But if they have, have one of their local volunteers that can't make it on a Thursday or a Friday or whatever days it is, I raise my hand and say, hey, I'd like to, I, I can sit in that day. And it's, and it's four hours, literally three to four hours of simply visiting people that are traveling Interstate Five. And it's a great opportunity to sell them on the, on the, the community that person represents. So that's it. Thank you for having me on, giving you an opportunity to explain what we do. It's, it's all volunteer based. There's nobody being paid. We get a little bit of money from the county that's dedicated funds and we have had to struggle like everybody else does just to keep our doors open. Any questions? If not, I'll go ahead and mute myself.
Thank you so much for sharing today. We really appreciate your, your insight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
With that in mind, what I propose is that we ask Mark Rowley to give a little background on him. And I think you'll see why I think he would be a fantastic addition to the C2C, as we call it. And that's why I would like to nominate him, but Mark, could we unmute him and have him say a few words about his background?
To be ready to go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Sure, I would be happy to give a little bit of a background. So interestingly, with the Collier Interpretive Information Center, excuse me, my wife and I first participated in it in the early 90s for close to probably a 15, 20-year period as whitewater rafters. And so we always thought, thought it was be very important to be involved in the Collier Interpretive Center. And so we had brochures in there for many, 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 many years. As some of you or most of you may know, I'm from a little town called Willow Creek on the Klamath Trinity side. But the little town of Willow Creek is the gateway entrance on the eastern edge of Humboldt County. And so I was able to develop a place that we could do our gateway center and we built a, a building bathrooms right on the corners of Highway 299 and 96. And we've been operating that now for, gosh, 25 years or so. And we see about 11,000 to 14,000 people annually. We could probably do better. But a lot of it is volunteer. We do pay for folks in the absolute heart of the summer. And also fortunately or unfortunately, one way or the other, I have been the president of the Humboldt County Visitors Bureau for the last three years. And we, we are involved with four gateway centers. And for a while, we were involved in a California Welcome Center, but we determined that the California Welcome Center was just such a heavy lift for us that we actually let it go back. And now it's just operated.
That's the same thing that happened with the Collier Center. They were welcoming center for a while and had to do the same thing, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, so that's back to normal. So I do have a lot of involvement in operating welcome centers. And then of course, my wife and I have the Mossbury Hotel and we've always been very involved in tourism and recreation. And I'm a strong believer in the welcome centers. They, they provide invaluable service. There, there's a thought out there today that welcome centers might be getting passed up by just going online in your smartphone. And, and there's an argument for that, but still at the same time, especially along the I-5 corridor, it has so many travelers that it still sees many, 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 many people. And, and I know that those folks come in and it gives you an opportunity to make that one-on-one relationship with them for the county. So, yeah, I would be a staunch supporter and believer of the information center. So yeah, I would be happy to serve on this. My wife and I are long-term residents. Where we live is not too far from the Humboldt Trinity Siskiyou County lines. They kind of all come together in our area. And that's all kind of a part of our community. So we kind of have to dabble in everybody's business to stay relevant to the rest of the world. So, yeah, with that, unless any of you have any specific questions, I would be happy to serve. I think I'm qualified and I'm one of those that tends to show up to every meeting because I believe that they're important.
Thank you, Mark. I really appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, I turn it over to you as to public comments and questions and et cetera. But my nomination is to nominate Mark Rowley to replace me on that board.
And I would second it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any questions of Mr. Rowley while he's on?
No, I, I would like to thank him for his dedication, his service and commend him on his exquisite motel. It, 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 the Dunsmere Hotel is a, is a landmark. It's, it's a great contribution and thank you.
Well, thank you, Big Dave. I really appreciate that coming from you.
You know what, dude? You have donated to all my soapbox derby things. You've donated to all the road Terry and things. I'm honored to know you and I second Bruce's nomination.
Well, thank you.
All right. Do any other questions? All right, see none. I guess we'll open this up to public comment. If anyone would like to make any public comment about the Colliers Interpretation Information Center. But before I do that, thank you so much, Mr. Rowley, for being on here. We really appreciate it. We look forward to working with you in this capacity as well as the other other hats you've taken on.
Well, wonderful. Thank you. I'm happy to participate.
All right. So if anyone would like to make a public comment at this time, go to the participants tab and raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, hit star nine. All right, I'm not seeing any raised hands. If anyone would like to raise your hands now. Well, I don't see any public comments, so I'll close public comment and move us forward with discussion. There has first been a motion to appoint Mark Rowley as our representative on the Colliers Interpretive Information Center Powers Committee. And the second, is there any discussion on the motion? See none. We'll move into a roll call vote. Councilwoman Lukeysey.
Hi.
Councilman Arthur.
Yes, indeedy.
Councilman Kaiser.
Yes, indeed.
Councilman Deutsch.
Indeed, B three.
All right, myself is also an I. Thank you so much, Mark. We really appreciate working with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and also thank you, Rennie.
You're very welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move forward into item A, City Manager Contract Amendment Regarding Compensation. See. Councilwoman Lukeysey, do you think you could pull up the agenda and bring it to that staff point? Or that that staff report? All right. So if my understand correctly, the item, we already approved it going into the contract. Is that correct?
Yes.
It would allow for increases or annual increases based on satisfactory performance? Even but we hadn't committed any any percentage range or amount range at all, and that this is supposed to come back for amounts. Is that correct?
Correct. So, yeah.
Councilman Arthur.
I didn't mean to cut anybody off.
No, you raised your hand.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a procedural motion to move this item into a closed session. I had discomfort with this item being on the agenda last time. In part because the memorandum is very incomplete. In larger part because much of the memorandum refers to the participation of the city attorney and the city attorney is not part of this public meeting. But I have any number of questions that I would like to ask the city attorney. So I do think the city attorney will concur that this is appropriate for closed session discussion. My second problem is besides the blanks under the option part of the memo before us. There's nothing about how the city is supposed to pay money out of the general fund that is now in deficit. So I don't know how much money we're talking about or how we're going to pay money out of the general fund that's in deficit. So I would ask that this item be moved to closed session. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Arthur. This is a proposal to move this to closed session. Is there any discussion on that proposal?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's my understanding that pay increases can't be done in a closed session.
Correct. So that's what I was going to point out. So we've talked to John Kenny multiple times. So John Kenny, city attorney, is not able to be on this meeting because he had knee surgery. It was a selective procedure to fix that. So it's nothing, you know, emergency wise. But just to correct, you cannot have a closed session on this type of salary negotiation. It does have to be an open session. So when you go into closed session, you have to reference a section of the allows you to go in and this does not qualify as one.
And I, Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up on that, the whole point we're trying to look at right now is that we already did have a closed session that did the evaluation part. So the whole idea that we're looking at is correcting a contract that did not allow for a annual evaluation and compensation review. And so what we're doing right now is simply saying, okay, let's make this correction right now and move forward. And the idea that we have to worry about whether we're in deficit or not, right? This is an essential item. I cannot think of one person or one position that we would not want to have open right now is this position. And everything we did during that closed session was glowing. Couldn't find anything wrong. So I just want to make sure that what we're looking at right now is what was a correction to a mistake in the fact that the contract didn't address this.
But thank you, Councilman Deutsch, but I would like to point out that, you know, you yourself and everyone involved approved the contract as was written. I knew at the time that this wasn't in there. It's certainly worth considering putting it in there like we have. It's not actually a mistake. It was how we chose to proceed back then. And now we're discussing differently now procedurally, but I do appreciate your point. Councilman Arthur, you were going to say something and then Councilman Kaiser also sounded like you were going to say something.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, under the protocols, all five of us have access to the city attorney. So I have not been involved. I disagree with my colleagues as to the completeness of the performance evaluation that we conducted in closed session. Having served in state government at a high salary, the performance evaluation we did for the city manager does not comport with what we all agreed to when the new city manager was hired in terms of goals and accomplishments, what was accomplished, what wasn't accomplished. That did not happen in closed session. So there are two issues. If the employment contract is defective, that is an issue that can be addressed. But again, we should be looking at contract language that we approve or not. With all due respect to Councilmember Lukeysey, nobody conducts salary negotiations with represented or unrepresented governmental employees in public. You just don't do that. So I would like to have the city attorney involved in this item whenever we go forward.
I think the problem is, is we have had John Kenny review this and I do have emails. If you want, I can pull up the email from John that says he does not feel that there's a government code section that covers this. And if it's in or in a contract, it does become open session.
It it ties directly to performance appraisals, which we've already done in closed session.
No, what we did in closed session was a performance evaluation, which has a specific government code section related to that, but a contract negotiation has to happen in open session.
And that's fine. We need to finish the discussion on performance appraisals before we consider bonuses and increases, even if the city had the money, which it doesn't.
Well, I did want to point out that the the general fund is actually not in deficit right now.
Yeah, what I mean, this is a, this is a fundamental point about will the city of Dunsmere, what relationship will it show and have with its city managers? If we decide that we're going to play games because six months ago, we didn't sit down and have our things in order to come up with something that could be tied to goals and things, we as a council did not have that in place. Now to say to the city manager, sorry, dude, we didn't have that in place. You're bad luck. What I'm saying is there was something that should have been in there in any contract. There's how do we increase? What kind of increase? What are the things? And as far as that is concerned, we have met and everything we said in that meeting was nothing but glowing. I do not remember a single thing that any of the five of us brought up about our city manager, other than you're doing a great job. So to talk, to talk about the idea that we should be saying, well, this and that, we have a great person who's already made so much money for us. I think we need to respect that and treat it accordingly.
Absolutely.
All right, well, it seems like there's a slight disagreement about where we're at relative to this exact report. It seems like from what I'm hearing, there's a consensus that the majority feels like this is enough to take action on immediately. I'm a little concerned with, you know, is this something where we're tied to a certain amount? If we pick a percentage, you know, in that blank spot, are we tied to that percentage each and every year? Because well, yeah, I mean, the way it's written, it kind of looks that way because it's a percentage, you know, an example is the suggested range. You know, it doesn't have a zero to a point. And it's just that, you know, there's two sides to compensation. One, of course, is, you know, someone doing well, but the other is what's going on with our income and revenue. And, you know, it's been a very difficult year. But there could be worse years and, you know, tying ourselves to something reasonable makes sense when we have a city manager. I think we have to respect them, et cetera. But am I correct in understanding that this would be, if there's a correct, is there any metric that is tied to objectively, or is this just in the contract that we could raise the rent between this and this if we so choose at that performance review each year?
So your your second part is correct. What John Kenny recommended, which we approved at the last meeting, was language that went into the contract, which was per a successful performance evaluation. The city manager may get an increase between two point five percent or five and five percent. And based on that performance evaluation. One of the things that was added that's in the options that's on the screen. So one of the things we have to do is we just have to decide what we prefer for the percentage for just this single year because it wasn't written in the contract. The other thing that is in the options, just to clarify, is that city manager Uhas was hired back in, I believe, September, October. And so we cannot retroactively apply the percentage increase to the contract. It's not allowed under the the state regulations to retroactively do that. So we would have to provide a bonus of X number of months to address the time that has elapsed if we so choose. So the things that are on the table today are the approval of what the percentage is just for this year. And the range that was suggested and we had adopted at the last meeting was between two point five and five, which is typical of this type of position. So we're just
The understanding that we didn't select percentages of any sort at the last meeting.
And I agree. I didn't vote for that.
There wasn't any range. It was just that we would approve the option for it.
What we had talked about at the last meeting was that we would pick what the percentage was for this year.
No, I believe we clarified
I disagree.
percentages at all because we didn't commit to any amounts. There was no discussion as to what would be a reasonable amount range. So I'm I'm pretty firmly under the, that's my memory, that we put off all percentage discussion.
So again, you could recommend that this year is a zero percent. You can say that the performance evaluation not satisfactory. Unfortunately, in the closed session, we did report out that it was a satisfactory performance evaluation.
Yep. Yeah, no, it's not that. It's more just, you know, more a technical matter. I'm fairly sure we didn't adopt a percentage range between two point five and five percent, just that there would be an amount that could be added to the contract.
We asked the city clerk to clarify from the minutes.
Yeah, I'm grabbing the minute right now.
Look at page fourteen of our agenda package.
So if we didn't pick a range, which I can be mistaken, but again, we did say it was a perform, based on the performance evaluation. So the evaluation of zero would be be based on a not satisfactory performance evaluation.
Juliana, where did the, where did the city attorney come up with these numbers?
For the
Why is the city attorney recommending pay increases for the city manager? Is that his job?
We did request that John Kenny review the item and offer his recommendation. Yes, we did.
Who's, who is the we?
The city council.
No.
We did that at several meetings ago when we first started talking about this.
Yeah, the the other point, you know, it's more just if we don't have that range, I was clearly under the impression that we didn't have the range yet. So I thought that was the first discussion that we'd have tonight, which is what range we would supply with the with the addition to the contract that we're allowed to reward a pay increase or bonus subsequent to a satisfactory employment review. But, you know, because there was no discussion of the range last time. So if we did adopt it, you know, maybe we could reconsider the range now because I think at least Councilman Arthur, it sounds like he hasn't had his input in what the range should be. And I don't think anyone really discussed it. And then we can move forward with, based on that range, what we'd like to do this year.
Can I read the minutes for the council?
Please.
Okay, so the motion was by Kaiser, the second by Deutsch, to prepare the amendment language of the city manager's contract, per city attorney's recommendation, to reflect a percentage pay increase and bonus to reflect time elapsed since the anniversary of the city manager's hire date. And at the next city council meeting, council will come back with a specific percentage increase and or bonus to enact. And that was a unanimous five zero.
That's what I remembered.
Thank you.
So I did John's email in reference to this. If you want, I can read it.
Well, this isn't appropriate. John's email was not part of the last agenda packet.
It's, it was in the staff report, like that's kind of what I'm trying to get at is you're asking where these numbers came from, where did John get these, this? John is explaining this and this was
We don't need to know with all due respect, Councilman Arthur, what John's reasons for suggesting those numbers. We have enough context, you know, the cost of inflation here is somewhere between two and three percent. So that's always going to be a basis point for keeping an employee whole, so to speak, who's performing their job well. But I think that's a good starting point. Let's proceed with discussion of the range or if there's full satisfactory job review.
I believe it should be five percent. I cannot imagine a person that we could find on the market that would be better than Todd Uhas for the future of Dunsmere.
Councilman Deutsch, I'm talking about the percentage increase written into the contract, the range from one to another.
Oh, two and a half to five, if that's what you got.
Yeah, five, two and a half to five, five percent.
All right. Is there any discussion or any alternative thoughts on the range, since I was a question mark?
Yeah, I mean, how most cities in California are facing a financial cliff. They're laying off employees, they're furloughing employees, their top executives are foregoing salary increases because their cities are broke and we're no different. So there's no analysis that goes with two percent or five percent or twenty percent. This, you're just making it up. So I I won't belabor it, but I'm simply a no on this issue.
Okay.
All right. That's okay, because we didn't, we, we didn't put it in the original contract. All we're trying to do is give him what he's got coming.
If you want the contract language to make him eligible, that's one thing.
That's what we did. That's what we did.
Yes for.
We did that.
Yeah, that's what we did, Pete.
That's good. I'm good with that. He's eligible. That's fine.
Okay, now we're just trying to put a number on it.
I boo five percent.
And and what's the basis for choosing five percent?
There's a motion for five percent.
I second it.
And a second.
Point, point of order. This is an an action item for the agenda and there does need to be public comment before we finish discussion and make motions.
Wait a second.
So this is
Juliana, our options are to approve or reject. Approve or reject a number. That's what we're up against.
First, we're, we're in the First, we're, we're in the stage of questions here regarding the item. And we'll open it up to public comment before we make motions.
Well, but is Juliana saying, she just said this is not N O T, an action?
No, it is. It is an action item. I'm just, just for clarification, I just heard someone made a motion. I just want to make sure that we have public comment before we go into the motion portion of this. That's it.
We stand corrected.
I stand corrected.
I just, I just want to make sure we're procedurally okay.
Okay, well, let's open it up to, if there's no further questions of the staff report. I will open it to public comment. It'll be the same as last time. You can go to the participants tab and raise your hand. If you raise your hand, you can speak. If you're joining us by telephone, hit star nine and it'll provide the same functionality. Seeing none, we'll now close the public comment and we can proceed with the motion portion of this action.
You're up, Bruce. I move that we approve a 5% increase for the pay of city manager Todd Uhas, along with a payment from the city for the time since his hire.
I second it.
Is that, it's undefined, 5% for this year?
Yeah, 5% and then also providing a, whatever you want to call it, a payment.
Bonus.
Well, bonus, whatever we want to call it, but I want to make sure that what we're doing is making up for what I believe regardless was a mistake. We should have had in here something like this, and so I don't want to make it sound like we're coming up with money out of nowhere. This is what should have been done.
Councilmember Deutsch, would you entertain a friendly amendment to bring the percentage down for this year from 5 to 3%? Just because it is COVID year and people are struggling. Five is, is a little bit higher than the inflation rate and three is a little bit higher than the inflation rate. Not that city manager Uhas doesn't deserve it. He does.
How about four?
I can do four.
Look, I will amend to say four. Dave, will you amend to four?
I'll second the four.
All right, motion amended and seconded. Deutsch and Kaisler, is there any discussion of the motion on hand?
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at the memo, page 29 of our agenda packet. Background discussion, back pay is not allowed under California law under a contract for services as the services have already been performed at the current contract rate.
So we're giving a bonus.
That's called back pay.
We're giving a bonus.
All right.
If I could jump in, I think that mainly refers to a CalPERS ruling. Do you need me to elaborate at all?
Well, you know, the assumption here is that our city attorney has looked at this and approved it, even though he is recommending that we do something to kind of avoid breaking the rule by doing it effectively anyway. But yes, Blake, would you like to elaborate a little further?
Well, I would just say that, that back pay is a, there's a, there's a CalPERS that it won't go back on his CalPERS retirement plans.
Okay, well, that is helpful. I guess everyone's had a lot to say on this. I'd like to share my, my small amount of insight into it. First, I'd just like to say that, you know, I think our city manager, Uhas, has performed phenomenally. I'm very pleased with his performance. I think he's been a real asset to the city of Dunsmere. When it comes to the pay increase this particular year, you know, it's just not a good time. You know, I know that, you know, you took a pay cut to come work here and I respect that, that you want to be here, you want to help the city. When we made the original contract, you know, for the time and largely for now, given COVID, it was as much as we, we could give. And not necessarily reflection of the open market, what you could be worth. So I would be in favor of maintaining, you know, through the cost of inflation, keeping you whole in that and no making up, just because I hope to be in a position to consider a true raise or bonus in the coming months, hopefully, but years I trust. And at this current moment, you know, of all the people in Dunsmere, our median income's very, very low. It's, it's not just simply a matter of, you know, you've done well. I completely agree you have. It's a matter of, at this exact moment in time, is it something that we can responsibly do with our citizens' funds? And will they understand it and agree with us? And we need to guide them and help them see that. So I don't know if anyone's open to an amendment, but I would be comfortable with 3% and no back pay bonus. But otherwise, I probably can't go forward with that amount. It's not a reflection of city manager Uhas' performance. I, I think he's performed excellently.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I want to really try and refocus in a whole different direction at looking at this. I know that $5,000 is some money, but there is nothing more important than the relationship between the city council and the city manager. I want to find as much money as I can, and I know we don't have a lot of money. But I think that we need to tell Todd that we do appreciate him. He did take a pay cut. And I'll tell you, the most important thing that I don't think most people in the city realize is that compared to a Weed or Machasta, they have a staff of people that right now is all in the hands of two people, Todd and the city clerk, Wendy. Everything that goes through that office that isn't particularly related to finance goes through those two people. And we have somebody that is doing a job like we couldn't imagine. And I'm saying that the most important thing right now is not the pennies and dollars. It's the relationship between the city council and the city manager. I'd like to ask you to call a vote.
Well, I would just say I disagree with your assessment. It's one of the most important things. Another important aspect is the relationship between the elected officials that are the city council and the citizens we represent and that responsibility. But I do believe both are important. I will allow the vote to proceed. I just wanted to say my say, are there any more, is there any more discussion before we call it to a vote?
I, one other point, and I, I'll wait for the next finance committee meeting to find out that we're flush with cash, because most of the businesses I know of in town are on the brink of shutting down. And I wonder if council members Kaisler and Deutsch, who are not on the finance committee, know that we pretty much crossed out our training budget for this year. We cut this expense, that expense, we pared the budget down. So there's a lot of things the city should be doing that are priorities that we are not doing because we don't have the money. Thank you.
Mr. Art, I have a question for you. What would happen if we lost Todd Uhas right now? How would that affect our budget?
I have no idea, sir. That's a silly hypothetical question.
Excuse me, gentlemen, Councilman Deutsch, please. We all know that the city of Dunsmere will proceed long after the current city manager, which I hope is many years down the road, and the current city council are gone. We're upholding an institution, a city that's going to be here. You know, nothing holds us hostage, not a city manager, not elections in this sense. You know, the citizens run their town through the institutions, democratic institutions we have in place, and we hire city manager. The process will go forward, but if there's no more direct discussion on this motion, I'd like to call a vote. Any more discussion?
Point of interest.
Yes.
Point of interest, Mr. Mayor. I've been here for quite a while. I've been through 13 city managers. It ain't no fun having to find another one. Just so you know.
All right, well, the question is not whether we are voting on another city manager or not. We're dealing with a pay increase and we have a difference of opinion.
We're trying to take care of the one we got.
Given on the COVID, which is fine. So Councilman Art.
No.
Councilman Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilman Kaisler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lukeysey.
Aye.
And myself, at this amount, at this exact time, is a no.
Well, 3-2, how's we, how we roll?
Yep, motion carries.
There you go.
And I'd just like to say, you know, based on these discussions, I think we really need these sort of discussions, because both sides have brought up very good points. Todd Uhas is of immense value to us, so is any competent, excellent city manager. And our budgetary constraints and our responsibility to our citizens are also present. So I think we both need to keep that in mind, and I've appreciated these discussions, even if it led to this sort of split vote. So thank you.
Right on.
Counsel. All right, let me go back to the screen share, I guess. Wait, as we move on to item B, continuation of committee review process. Councilwoman Lukeysey, you were saying you would like to defer this?
Yeah, you know, we did, thanks to city manager Uhas, we did put together the historic committee discussion that was talked about at the last meeting. I did have in my notes, we do need to put together a charge for a sewer water rate ad hoc that did not get done, and then we have to put together the economic development committee for further discussion. I did talk to city manager Uhas about that item a little bit, but I don't think it's ready to further discuss it at this time. I'd like to have a little bit more information before we can look at some options for that economic development tourism one, but I think we could. The only other thing that I had in my notes, which let me pull those up really quick from the last meeting. We did do the Colliers today, which was a separate item, historic's going to be a separate item, so I just need to follow up on the rate study economic development. And John did not get back to me yet with the CDBG loan legality item. So we'll return with that as well. And that was to reference that legality item. The CDBG loan committee only has one person on it and it does have some pretty sensitive information, and there was a discussion on possibly assigning it to the finance committee. And we were going to get John to weigh in on what that looks like, so I have not gotten that yet from him. And I think city manager, not city manager, sorry. Councilmember Deutsch was talking about the Chamber of Commerce, so I don't think that Chamber of Commerce liaison item is ready to go yet.
Okay, well, it sounds like collectively, if no one else has an objection, we should defer that till we're a little bit more thoroughly prepared on all those committees, and there's a lot there. So, you know, it may take some time to get all the answers, but are there any objections to deferring that till the next council meeting?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, let's move forward with item 11, new business. A review of the historic district history and current planning commission designees. Todd Uhas?
Yeah, sure, Councilman Art has been asking for a discussion of the historic district. And I think what I wanted to do is put together anything that I could find in our paperwork and online, in our emails in the past, a record of what has been discussed through time. And it is, you know, it's, there's a long history. And also that I want to see if we can tease out tonight what exactly Councilman Art is looking for, because it's, it's, for me, it's still not completely clear. But just to go into the background of this, you know, and you've got this all in front of you, but there was a consultant hired back in 2004 and, you know, there was a, you know, a standalone committee which continually lacked a quorum, you know, which was an issue over time. And the meeting costs and the input from consultants to make this all happen, what ended up being cost prohibitive. So, you know, there's, there's a long history, but there was a historic district strategic revitalization plan that was put together, which sent out letters, letters to tenants and owners of historic buildings that explains, you know, basically what they're, what they want to do accomplish, which is essentially a review of a checklist of items you know, that were in disrepair, you know, broken tile, window panes that are broken or, you know, you know, rotting wood on window frames, signs that are in disarray. And with that, then, you know, the property owners were given a certain amount of time to rectify the situation or fines were levied on these folks. Now, there is, you know, so there's, there's a long history of this and we ended up having seven, it ended up morphing into a a two-member portion of the planning commission that act as a historic district liaison, which is exactly what we have today, that weighs in on historic district applications as they come in or renovations or, you know, where alterations or new construction. And so, you know, that's, that's where we currently stand. We could, and what I'm proposing is, we could go back to creating that checklist and a letter to go out to folks that own buildings in the historic community or tenants that say, these are the things that we're going to be looking at and looking at our ordinance, then applying a, you know, you know, saying that you've got a certain amount of time to fix the issues that are wrong with your buildings. Or a fine would be levied that, you know, and we, we could do that again. City Hall's pretty stretched thin with everything we've got going on from solid waste to a new sewer and water rate study to, you know, you name it. The grant applications, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, we could take that on. You know, beyond that, I don't know really what we can do in, you know, if we're looking for a body that can come in, that's created to, you know, say from on high, you must do this. We don't have the mechanism to, to do that. That is a function of a business improvement district, which is typically not connected to the city. It's a 501(c)(3), you know, corporation where business owners in the community get together. They pool their money and decide on a set of, of, you know, agreed upon regulations to keep each other honest. And then the pooled money helps towards these improvements and also to get out the word and prospect for economic development.
Thank you. Are there any questions, clarifying questions at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Todd, the one question I have has to do with the ability of a body such as this to force people to make changes or upgrades and if not, being fined. Doesn't that have to, the aspect of citing somebody with the possibility of a fine have to come from somebody like the code enforcement officer?
So that's, that's the other issue here. When this original audit took place with the code enforcement officer and the building inspector, there was talk of two ordinances that were passed at that time. And I see the ordinances, but they were never codified. They are not on our books. So unless those organs are actually codified and, and put into the books, it's not legal. We can do it, but whatever housekeeping was done back then, never happened. But I would add this as part of the discussion. If you were out asking for building owners to fix things like broken tile and, you know, you know, building facades, peeling paint, all that kind of stuff, while that's important, just know, you know, just be aware that city council is likely to face a lot of blowback in the time of COVID. I mean, we can certainly do it. I mean, we, you know, we can codify. you know, we can reintroduce and codify those ordinances and then move forward on this. It's just, you know, is this what the direction is that we want to go?
Thank you. Are there more clarifying questions?
I do, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Peter.
Councilwoman Casey, you were first.
Oh, thank you. City Manager Yuhas, I apologize if I missed this. Are you're just mainly looking for some clarification on, you know, what direction we want to go? Does the current system meet the state's certified local government for the Historic Department? I don't think it does, but I can't remember if you had talked to the Historic Historic Representative. I believe Councilmember Arthur, you had talked to a woman a little while ago about setting that up?
We do. It's just, do we want to set up a more robust committee that does review these applications? And do we have the people here in town with the expertise to carry this out? And I would posit that we don't. And so what has been proposed in the past is we hire a consultant from the outside to do this kind of work. And I don't think we have the money for it.
But with due respect, the answer to your question is no. We do not qualify as currently configured.
Yes, we do.
That is not what I heard from the architect's office.
Well, we, what we, to clarify, we meet that threshold. What we were talking about is whether or not we want to set up a commission with qualified people to review all of these, you know, new applications in a way that is historically accurate, which needs Historic Preservationists, which means we need consultants. Because we just don't, I don't, we don't think we, and maybe there's a hidden gem of seven people in town that are willing to meet on a regular basis that have this expertise. That would be great.
Would it be possible, you know, if we did go forward with the current configuration, could we look for grant funding to be able to hire a consultant to put together architectural guidelines and standards for the downtown district that could be applied by Planning Commission?
The answer is hypothetically, yes, if there are grants available, I would assume there are.
Okay. Because that could be an option is instead of having seven qualified individuals to make a discretionary decision each time, to just have a special set of architectural guidelines and standards that meet the historic aspect that we want to promote, which that could come out in the drafting phase. And then those would be set, and then we could review them whenever, you know, Planning Commission, City Council want to. But it at least would give some kind of framework for laymen to make a judgment call on if something would be a architecturally significant thing or not.
Yeah, I mean, that would be ideal.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to address Councilmember Lucchese's comments. In fact, we, as I believe you know, we have a historic preservation element of our general plan. And there are programs in that element that call for specifically what you just suggested.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Rico, can I ask a question on that? So how in depth, I mean, you know, typically it would be listing everything from, you know, just like the Historic District designation, it lists each type of building and what architectural style of each of these structures. But does it get into what appropriate elements are based on the particular architectural style of a particular structure?
The general plan programs do not. And
I think that's
and just to support everything that, you know, I read Todd's staff report. And I have to agree, you know, I've been working with the Planning Commission. Granted, I was absent for a number of years. But for the years that I've worked with the Planning Commission, it's always been a difficult time getting just, you know, everyone to participate. And particularly trying to find someone who's knowledgeable with regard to architecture, you know, we've been fortunate in the past, we've had a few interested individuals. I had her on the cloud previously. But that is a specialty that, you know, frankly, we just, if we do have that resource in our community, it hasn't been identified yet, at least by me.
One, one more clarifying question. And looking at the history, I am of the impression, and I guess former mayors Deutsch and Kaisler could clear it up. But I thought the city, on the unanimous vote of the City Council and the Planning Commissioners, agreed in 2014 to create a five-member body. And as I read through the chronology, there's talk about difficulty in getting a quorum and difficulty in staffing and so on and so forth. But I never see that the city said this was a bad idea, we're going back to the two members. When did that happen?
Going back to two members, let me figure out where that was on this list.
There's a reference on the July 14 paragraph about a recommendation, but there's no vote or anything like that. It just says, this is where we are.
Doesn't it also fall into that sentence, it is unclear from the records whether the required dual ordinance was adopted?
So I, what I should have added is, there was a vote on returning it to two members.
And do we have the minutes for that?
I'll have to dig it up. And I spent two weeks going through these records. I'd have to pull everything I looked at out again. But yeah, I saw.
In all honesty, it doesn't make any sense. I was in the audience in 2014, but Big Dave chaired the meeting. I've given this testimony 86 times. Ron McLeod was the star witness. He told everybody in the audience and the commissioners and the council members, the two-member approach on the Planning Commission did not work, in his opinion. The Historic District has suffered, in his opinion. And what works the best by far, and I treat Ron McLeod pretty much as the father of our Historic District, was a more involved body of five or seven, it doesn't matter. But they drew from the time when all of the downtown buildings in Dunsmere were not boarded up. So I, I don't understand why, just a few weeks later, everybody would change their mind and say, no, the two-member thing is really better.
Well, it came down to this, the motion that was made, and I can dig it up, was that we failed over many meetings to ever reach a quorum of enough members to hold that seven-person committee. And so there was a vote and an assent that it be changed back to a two-member advisory, you know, body that is part of the Planning Commission.
Do you remember that, that week, Councilmember Kaisler?
Oh, he might have gotten muted, let me find him. Yep, he got muted. Dave, you should be able to unmute yourself. It looks like Dave's having some difficulty, but I was actually, I can't raise my hand, so I apologize if I kind of interacted. Oh, Dave. Hey, Dave, your connection
Can you hear me?
Your connection is real bad, but maybe talk real slow.
Oh, man, this sucks.
Oh, no, now you're good.
Okay. When we increased it, we were to include the city manager, the fire chief, public works, Dave Smith, the building inspector. And I think the guy from water, sewer and water, to inspect the buildings. But nobody could ever get together at the same time. And then when they did, it was sort of felt like the Gestapo thing. So that's, that's where that, and I remember going back to two, because everybody was like, well, Dave Smith is like, why am I here? The fire chief was like, why am I here? If there's a problem, then, you know, that, that, we would address it. But nobody could seem to get together, like, okay, we're all going to meet at 12:30. Well, nobody was around at 12:30. The fire chief was on calls. Dave Smith had a building inspection somewhere out of town. So I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of where that fell. So that, that's where, when we committee, it was to increase it with city manager, fire chief, the police chief, the city works, all key people of the city. So that, that's, that's what happened.
So I've got a question. I guess for the sake of council, I've got a question for Councilman Arth. I'm just, can you articulate what exactly you are trying to accomplish? Because maybe there's another way to get at it.
Yes, what I am trying to do is build off of what we heard from the state architect. How does a small city, financially strapped, tiny staff like the city of Dunsmere maintain what I consider one of its most appealing aspects? It's historic buildings that, thanks to the work of Ron McLeod and countless others, we still have historic buildings in a compact district. Some are at risk of disappearing. Others have fallen into the hands of responsible owners who follow the Historic District ordinance are really not subject to the abandoned building ordinance. So to both preserve the Historic District, its integrity and its history, and to deal with the specific health and safety and economic issues, knowing that our small downtown is pretty much coterminous with the Historic District boundaries. In talking to Ron McLeod, it was never envisioned that the Historic District Management Committee, again, five or seven, I don't care, would have any enforcement powers whatsoever. Clearly, those rely or those redound to the city, its code enforcement officer, and its enforcement mechanism, just like any other ordinance in the city of Dunsmere. What the five or seven-member body would do, in my view, is fairly promptly incorporate itself into a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. That would make it eligible for grants, loans, retaining consultant expertise if needed. But I, you know, I just encourage everybody to take a walk downtown, walk from one end of the Historic District to the other, whether it's on Sacramento Avenue or Shasta Avenue or Dunsmere Avenue. And it looks shabby. So while you praise Mark Rowley for the beautiful Mossbury Hotel and, you know, the Renaro Apartments and commercial spaces are right next to it. The reality is, if you look out the windows of your nice hotel room or the apartment across the street from the theater annex, you see windows that are papered over, you see paint falling off, you see a blue chipboard door where there should be a glass panel. What about sidewalk issues? Are we going to have pavers or are we going to have concrete? Are we going to have parking meters or not? The Pine Street Plaza, who's going to move the Pine Street Plaza from being frozen in 1960 to what it could be in 2024? The Planning Commission's not going to do it. The city staff is not going to do it. Not surprisingly, I spend a whole lot of time with the other building owners in the Historic District. And it is in our self-interest, as well as the interest of our city, to make the Historic District the attractive asset it could be for our city. So I think the case is clear that what we have been doing works very poorly. And to build a little bit on former Mayor Kaisler's recollection, sitting in the audience, the discussion was like this. We're afraid of getting sued. We don't want to piss off any of the building owners that need to do work on their building. We're not sure we have the legal authority to do anything, so let's just do nothing. The main movers in 2009 on the Dunsmere Historic District Strategic Revitalization Plan was myself, Tim Holt, and Helen Cartwright. And we did, it was on my dime, we took out newspaper ads, we met with the building owners. But as the city attorney points out, we were dealing with the 95% and not the 5%. So, A, there's no effort put forth to preserve the buildings in the Historic District that I'm aware of. B, there's no effort to look at the district holistically and see what it could be for a community that cares. And C, with great fanfare, we did the abandoned building ordinance, just like the city of Weed in the spring of 2020, and we're not enforcing it. Those are my issues.
Okay. That's helpful. That was, so I think I got this. I, okay. If, if I may, Councilmember Arth, please correct me if I'm wrong. So I kind of summarized your, your list into six main things. What you would like to do is preserve the historic nature of the downtown district and the buildings there.
Yes, we're really, we're really required to under state and federal laws, not just
I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you're getting at. And if you could, please let me finish. Okay.
Sure.
So you'd like, so you'd like to preserve the historic nature of the downtown. You'd like to explore what that historic preservation piece is with design pieces like the papers you mentioned or sidewalk. You'd like to maintain the high quality of the buildings that have been improved. You'd like to improve buildings that are not at the same quality as the others. And then you also mentioned that you'd like to somehow address parking issues. And then I also had that you want to promote the downtown district, which has a marketing element to it. Did I, did I summarize the main points that you're trying to get across?
Yes, planning is an element, enforcement is an element, and attracting, and attracting funds, money is an element.
Okay. So, yeah, I've reviewed this item, you know, you've requested it, and I've reviewed it with City Manager Yuhas a couple of times. And that's how we got to this item here, because what you're looking for isn't necessarily a Historic District. It is in a, in a way, there's a component to this. But it looks like what you're really looking at is what's called a Business Improvement District or a BID.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so, so that does, City Manager Yuhas, does that kind of clarify a little bit that we are, Councilmember Arth is more leaning towards the Business Improvement District model with some historic design elements as a side piece?
Well, I would, I've got a couple of comments. This first to, you know, so I don't lose track of this train of thought that you put together, both you put together. I see this clearly as a bid, which is a 501(c)(3) corporation where businesses get together. They pool their money, they come up with a set of agreements to hold each other accountable for certain standard. And fall below that, it's up to that bid to, you know, to make sure the other members of the bid are, stay honest. The other piece of this that I'm hearing is The other piece of this that I'm hearing is, you know, from my mind, we don't, and it gets back to Juliana, your, you know, idea of chasing funds for coming up with a, you know, true set of architectural and historic guidelines for what is appropriate for the timeframe and the design style of each of these structures. And I think that both of those, you know, that I think for the bid to be successful, it would be great to have that set of architectural standards in place that they can use as part of their arsenal. But in terms of being able to maintain it, market it, and enforce it, that is a bid in a nutshell.
But I, yeah, yeah, I, can I just ask, sorry, go ahead.
You know, I, I think that the, these are, these are all valid points. The, I think the, the thing that, you know, the disconnect for me is there seems to be a step in between this, is it's really hard to enforce architectural standards when a large number of our buildings in town are, appear to be viable businesses that open just sporadically and they appear to have junk in the window as opposed to real things that visitors and citizens would like to purchase or be part of. And so, you know, getting that rolling is, it seems to be our, our bigger issue, but you know, this is certainly an issue.
I do have a quick follow-up question for councilmember Art and other councilmembers can weigh in on this one because it's, it's pertinent. So one of the things that we talk about with historic districts is what level of historic preservation do you want? Do you want the original sconce that was on the side of the building in the exact detail of its original implementation? Or would you be comfortable with interpretations of the architectural timeframe that they were built in? So one, one of the things we talk about is cultural. I'm gonna forget the word, but I did a really interesting workshop in San Francisco that looks at a historic park, which is the Levi Strauss Plaza, if you've been there. One of the things, yeah, so you know the Levi Strauss Plaza. One of the things they're tackling is, as time has gone on, certain elements of the original historic plaza have changed to accommodate current users. So for example, the fountain in the Levi Strauss Plaza was originally designed to have people interact with it, to actually play in the pools, to be able to be there on summer days and kind of lounge around in there. But because of liability issues, because of safety issues with the original fountain, they have now discontinued that use, which some diehard historic preservationists say is incorrect for the interpretation. So I think, you know, we don't have to answer today, but one of the bigger questions as we start to talk about design standards and what does historic really mean is, is basically that what level are we going to be evaluating? Because the other thing to bring into this is historically registered buildings are, are, are kept under a different standard as a historic district. And so a historic building in and of itself is actually a higher standard of historic preservation. It goes to that whole, you have to have the exact sconce and this type of finish from this type of era because that is the original sconce and there is no interpretation outside of that. But with a historic district, you do have a little bit of wiggle room in terms of design interpretation. So for example, we could look at the historic timeframe of when the travelers was built and have an array of options within that timeframe of, okay, here was what the architectural style was at that time. And you can, as long as you're within these boundaries, you're good. Or do we really want to go back to this exact thing? So we don't have to answer that tonight. It's just something that's gonna need to get fleshed out as we keep moving forward with that.
Well, I, I am grateful. I am grateful to you for referring us to the state architect office. They have a fairly competent staff of professionals that seem to be quite willing to help Dunsmere, if Dunsmere is willing to ask for the help to answer all of those questions. And as we know, and as you know, we're guided by federal law and guidelines, state law and guidelines. And then the city adopted, when they decided to have a historic district, this protective ordinance that the city totally ignores. So what I want to do is move the city from being an obstacle to supporting the preservation of the historic district. A bid is okay for me if that's what everyone wants to do, but I would appoint the five members and let them decide for the planning element and for our own self-interest, how much we could chew on in the next 12 months, the next 24 months. But especially with the iconic California Theater, if we don't act in our own self-preservation, the whole point of this is we will lose buildings that can never be replaced or will not be replaced or will become uneconomical to repair and keep with any semblance of our historical past.
May I interject?
Yes.
So just because it's, it's come up a few times. Councilmember, I appreciate what you said about how, how detailed you want to make things. And I, and I don't want to go there right now. But, and councilmember Art, you brought up the California Theater. And I imagine we probably get some folks here that remember when the California Theater's marquee was hit. I expect councilmember Art was probably around at that time.
I was the mayor at the time.
You were, so you, you remember the issues that we had trying to get that marquee put back up?
And we, with, with the city attorney, we had to go to Superior Court to get it done. But we got it done.
Yes.
No big deal.
Yep, well, the, the funny part of the story though is, the marquee that is up there now is not the same, does not look anything like the marquee that was hit.
Exactly so, because we had no oversight. And to me, that is a temporary tooth. There are three different configurations of the marquee since the building was built in the 1920s. And the city told the building owner, this is the marquee we want. And he went ahead and put up the, he removed the original marquee, which he was not supposed to do, the pressed tin and the frame. That disappeared and then he contracted with a contractor in Redding for the lower marquee that comes out of a scrapbook of walls with multiplex cinemas. It's nowhere close to being historically correct.
I'm not sure if you were present for that meeting and I, and I don't wish to disagree with you. But we actually had the original, one of the original owners of the Dunsmere Theater or the California Theater show up at the meeting where that marquee was discussed and talked about how heavily it had been modified over the years. And that what, what Mark Juarez was proposing was actually much more aligned with the original marquee. So, and, and again, I'm not trying to debate this or anything. I'm just simply stating, it is interesting. Our, our historic district has been heavily modified over the years per the needs of the time. So yes, we got, we, we need to be very careful about how we proceed. And with design guidance, many things have been discussed over the past with regard to paint palettes, color, or color palettes for, for business owners. And, you know, really from my perspective, the best, if really, if we are sincere about our historic district and a, in particular, a look for our historic district, then we really should be assisting the business owners and these property owners with giving them at least some sort of guidance. Because, you know, I, we don't want to overburden people, but we want to make things easy for people. We want them to improve their buildings and, and make it very easy.
And I would suggest to make it easy, you would actually have a forward-looking plan for what we all as a community want the historic district to look like. Agree on what is practical and possible. There is, in Ron McLeod's possession, I assume it's in the public domain, a description of every single building in the historic district. Its prominent architectural features, it is classified as a contributing building, a highly significant building, modified to where it really doesn't matter anymore. So all the pieces are there, but because the city had an economic slump around 2008, there were bigger fish to fry. And the city was broke and didn't have a staff. And most of the buildings were without any tenants at all. So I understand the chronology that's before all of this. But I don't find it helpful to, at least where I want to go in the future.
I think for the purpose of this discussion, I think I understand councilmember Art, what you, what you're looking for better. And so I would be comfortable working with Todd and Rico to bring back a staff report with a couple of options for council to move forward.
I'd appreciate it if you'd work with me a little bit too.
Sure, yeah, I can, I can send you some stuff. I think right now we're in the point where I get the general, the general, the general direction that you'd like to go in. So there's a couple of different technical pieces that we can push forward. And so I can send you some information before we bring it up to council and you can have some input before we bring it back.
And I, you know, I will guarantee you, I can find, when I talked to Kathy Wallace this morning, Kathy Wallace said, I care deeply about the historic district. I have a background, I've lived here a long time. I would love to serve as one of the members of the Historic District Management Committee. So, you know, shame on the city and its staff for going backwards in 2014. But that's no reason to abandon the historic district looking forward to, I hope, the robust economic future we're all looking forward to.
Thank you, Councilman Art, for engaging in review of this long-needed oversight and preservation of the historic district. And thank you, Juliana, for gathering up what we're trying to do. Is there any more discussion based off this staff report? And thank you, Todd, for a very thorough historical review of how this issue has evolved.
Public comment?
All right, well, there's no more discussion here. I will open it to public comment. Anyone would like to make a public comment, you can go to the participants tab and raise your hand or hit star nine if you're on the telephone.
Hello?
Hello?
This is Dwight Bailey. Just thank you for thinking about the downtown area and the historical value we have there. There are cities that have handled similar situations, some of which I don't like the involvement with, but Big Menesino would be an example. Over there, you can't paint anything and they have a 12-member board setting like this. And it is a no-thank job. Everybody gets on that board until they can't stand it anymore and then they go off and do something else. But they have been able to somewhat manage the city by dominating and having a, an oversight committee. It has worked there. I don't agree with it all, but it has seemed to be working as the tourist going there. Thanks for looking into it.
All right, thank you, really appreciate that. And what was your name?
Dwight.
Dwight, Dwight Bailey, and your address?
5906 Castle.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, is there any more public comment tonight? See none, we'll close public comment. And I believe we're ready to move on to item 12, consideration of future agenda items.
We talked, we talked about the idea of speed bumps. We kind of dropped that in, in things. I'd like to raise the hand on that again.
Yeah.
Um, just to, just to clarify with the speed bump thing, we didn't bring this up in, in a staff member comment, but it might be pertinent. City manager Yu Haas and I are working with the local government commission on that transportation study, and that would be part of that.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. Are there any other items for future consideration?
Mr. Mayor, what was the disposition of item 11?
The disposition of item 11?
Yes.
I believe it was the item for discussion or review is the exact.
So what happens next?
What happens next?
Oh, go ahead.
I believe what happens next is Juliana is going to work with yourself and city manager on, now that we've had this review of the history of the historic district, work on options for council to consider going forward.
And when will that come back?
I'm, I'm.
I'll try and get.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll, I probably won't have it done for the next meeting, but I'm hoping the meeting after, just because I want to close out the other committee item that I was gonna have for tonight. Is that okay for the, it would be the first meeting in February?
Yeah, I, I want us to get in the habit of not just putting an item on the agenda, having a discussion, and then it goes back into the ether. So I think we have a rough stretch ahead of us as a city and our economic development. And I know I'm not the only one that places a high priority on this topic, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further items.
Well, I guess, Mr. Mayor, the related item is the enforcement issue. And I do think it is a related issue, but an independent issue as to when we start enforcing the ordinance for vacant and abandoned buildings. As I understand it, the city staff has not done anything to date. And I think that's a mistake. I think a level playing field is appropriate for those commercial building owners that take care of their buildings and those that don't. It exacts an economic cost to have these buildings empty and shabby. So since we are paying for a code enforcement officer, we did adopt the ordinance that's working well in Weed. I wish we would start enforcing it. I don't understand why we don't.
All right, code enforcement is a future agenda item, update on that. And it relates to the historic district because it's certainly close to the best thing we could do to revitalize the downtown district when we are able to legally. All right, are there any other future agenda items to consider at this time? Well, if you, if you think of any more, you can always email me or Todd and we'll get them, get them ready to be on the agenda.
And we are gonna, we are gonna start a gender review meetings?
Yes, I think we very much ought to. I will send out an email and we'll put a schedule together of people to participate because it's supposed to be the mayor and one other alternating council member.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. I've got, I've got the Excel spreadsheet I can send over to you. I just don't think we started entering for this calendar year, so it's pretty straightforward. I'll send that over after the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's move forward to item 13, consider the motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
Second that.
All right, motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor, say hi.
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 Against? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Stay safe, bye.
You too, good night.